Roll over funds, so as you can see in the attached report, there are two columns, one showing the neighborhood councils who submitted reports, who submitted funding requests that complied with both the council action and department instructions in terms of being able to document the validity of the funding requests. And that totals 741,468 dollars. The second column shows neighborhood councils that did not comply, but basically said that they should be allowed to be reimbursed for funds that were taken from this year's funds, which should have been taken out of last year's funds. And I think that it wasn't the neighborhood council's fault that we had to do that. It was trying, the department and the city trying to make sure that our rollover balances were properly reconciled. So we put a temporary freeze on the use of prior rollover, prior year rollover funds, which affected neighborhood councils' ability to spend their full allocation for this year. So that total is 312,500 dollars.
So before you move on from that, let me make sure I understand this chart then. The column that's labeled noncompliant is not the entirety of noncompliant requests that were submitted to the department? These figures are only those situations where the current fiscal year funding was used to backfill prior year commitments?
That's correct.
Okay, so in addition to this 312,000 figure, presumably there were other expenditure requests that were submitted to you that weren't documented, couldn't be demonstrated in board minutes, or for other reasons were noncompliant with the council's policy direction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the noncompliant figure does represent the amount of money that we paid out of this year's funds for prior year's expenses.
Okay, so in other words, if you took the total of responses that you got from the neighborhood councils, presumably that total came up to some number larger than 1,533,000 because it would have included a number of things that just couldn't be documented at all and otherwise were noncompliant. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. I understand it.
It's a little complicated. And so we had also notified neighborhood councils on Friday and sent them a copy of our council committee report to let them know that these would be the recommendations that we would be taking to committee and then subsequently for the full city council to take action on. And that completes my report, and I'd be happy to ask any, answer any questions you may have.
Okay, just for the sake of, because this is our last time, hopefully, on this issue for a while, can you talk about what the procedure was that you set in place for, you know, the documentation process? And perhaps you can talk a little bit about the requests that weren't compliant with that documentation process as well, because that's not included then, as I understand it, in this chart?
That's correct. Our report does not include a breakdown of the neighborhood councils that we felt did not comply with either council directive or department instructions. For example, many submitted requests after the deadline. But the instructions that we had provided to neighborhood councils, because we required documentation that would basically validate the requests that they were making, so we asked them to submit completed demand warrants, copy of an invoice, approved board minutes that show the actions that they had taken. We also needed to be sure that the council, that the neighborhood council board took action prior to January 29th, which was also part of the council instructions. For contracts, we also asked for letters of agreement with the vendors, also a signed letter of commitment, because a lot of times neighborhood councils will submit requests, but they don't have any prior agreements with their vendors, which then leads to delays in payment. And then demonstration that they had adopted the line item request in their, in their Those are, those are the specific documentation requests, and the, the neighborhood councils that we included in the compliant column, we felt submitted enough documentation to give us, to confirm that these neighborhood councils did comply with both council directive and department's instructions.
So to put it broadly, the 741,000 dollar figure, and for that matter, even the, the 312,000 dollar figure that you have in the noncompliant, in the, the column that's, that's labeled noncompliant, although I think it might need a different label than noncompliant.
Right.
But those two figures represent actual commitments or actual expenditures that neighborhood councils, in fact, made, that were clearly documented in the records. These are not simply things that neighborhood councils had a desire to preserve for some unspecified use or, or some long-term plan. These were line items in their budgets specifically documented with supporting documentation to your satisfaction, that these were appropriate expenditures of those, those funds.
That's correct. We, our recommendation would include the, the neighborhood council funding requests that we determined had adequate backup documentation, because the controller won't pay our demand, our payments if we don't make sure that the proper documentation is in place. So our recommendation for the 1.1 million 53,968 does constitute valid payments.
Okay, and let's go back for a moment to the 312,000 dollar figure and talk in a little bit more detail about why it is that a neighborhood council would be in the position of having one of these figures here.
Sure.
Maybe you could give a, a specific example and walk through how it would, would work.
Well, I think everybody has to understand that our funding accounting system lacked certain capabilities. One example is that what I hear from a lot of neighborhood councils is an assumption that we track money on a first-in, first-out basis. So some interpret the very confusing rollover policy as being a time-limited policy. But the problem is that we don't have the ability to distinguish accounts payable, for example, in our accounting systems. So until we completed the forensic accounting work, what we had to do was to put a temporary hold on prior year's rollover funds. That had the unintended impact of us paying prior year's expenses out of current year's funds. It was my intent, before the council action on the rollover policy, is once our accounting work was completed, that we would then do the reconciliations to make sure that those funds would be credited to the rollover balances of the neighborhood councils that we had taken the, the funds from. And so what we did as part of this exercise is to go back and look at every neighborhood council and, and determine which ones we took, which were affected by that policy. Basically, how many neighborhood councils did we take funds out of this year's funds that should have been taken out of prior year's funds? And that is what constitutes the, the 312,500 dollar figure. I know it can be very confusing, but that's in essence what we attempted to do with this accounting exercise.
So a neighborhood council prepares its budget for the year in good faith, anticipating that it's going to have the benefit of a certain amount of money that we've termed rollover funds. They prepare their budget, and then because of a, because of the forensic accounting that you're doing, those rollover funds are no longer available to the neighborhood council because of the freeze. In order for those legitimate expenditures that were anticipated to be made in good faith to be made, the funds have to come from the following year's allocation then. Is that the way it works? Is that what we're talking about?
That's correct, and that was only a temporary fix.
Which would then be, not reversed, but it would be dealt with, with the unfreezing of the rollover funds.
Correct.
Which is now not going to take place.
Correct, and what we were doing prior to this was basically asking neighborhood councils to submit a budget that included their estimate of the rollover funds, plus the new year's allocation, and that we treated that as one lump sum figure, which we then reducted all the expenses from. That had been prior year's practice. So when I learned that we didn't actually have a true accounting reconciliation system, I had, I thought it was a prudent, it was, in my judgment, the most prudent way to manage public funds, say, look, we have to know exactly how much funds we're talking about for each neighborhood council, especially, especially as the city looks to, during this fiscal budget crisis, to look at saving as much funds as possible. So we did not have the ability to determine the exact rollover amount, so we had to, as a temporary stopgap measure, to just say, hold on, let's not give you access to the rollover funds until we could finish this accounting exercise, after which then we would do the reconciliations and place the expenses in the proper year.
So again, to come back to your, your chart here on the rollover access, the 312,000 dollar figure are expenditures of the same nature, the same kinds of commitments as in the 741,000, except for the fact of the pot of money that they're being reimbursed out of, the fiscal year pot.
That's-
Is that fair to say?
That is fair to say.
So then I, it seems to me that it's entirely consistent with what the council was trying to accomplish in preserving neighborhood councils' ability to, to have access to those funds for the claims that have already, for the things that have already been appropriated, committed, paid for, and submitted for reexpend, reimbursement, contractual obligations, all of the things that the council determined the, the sweep to be subject to. It seems to me consistent with that policy that the council adopted, to include then the 312,000 dollars, despite the fact that it was paid out of a different fiscal year fund. It still is the same nature of expense that the council intentionally sought to preserve from this, this policy that we've adopted. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I would agree, and I think it would be fair on the part of the city to include the 312,000 dollar figure, because it really wasn't the neighborhood council's fault that the accounting, the deductions were made not in the year that they were budgeted for. It was really the city's fault, and so I think it would be very fair for neighborhood councils who do the, did the due diligence and followed the proper paperwork and did the proper board procedures and documentation. All of that is in compliance. It just, they were stuck in this very odd place, given the council action regarding the rollover policy.
Right. So that being the case, I'd ask that if you can, before tomorrow, if you could revise this chart, I think the, the headings on the columns should not be compliant and noncompliant. I would suggest that they be compliant from fiscal year X and then compliant from fiscal year Y, if that works, you know, that sort of verbiage, because the noncompliant, I think, is a little bit misleading.
Correct.
It suggests that somehow they're, they were violative of the policy, and I don't think that was the case. I get, I get what you're, the differentiation that you're striking.
Mm-hmm.
But in my view, both columns are in fact consistent with what the call, what the council attempted to achieve, and it's really a matter simply of the source, the specific fiscal year source from which these ought to be paid or reimbursed.
Yes, I think that's a helpful correction, and we'll make that revision.
Now, I did note that in your, that you have a report dated today that is, in some respects, different in the numbers than the report that was submitted on March 31st. It appears that the amount of claims, total claims, went up a bit, and the, the total amount of compliant requests went down a bit, and it looks like the number of requests that you include in this noncompliant category also went up a bit. Was that, what was the reason for that? Is that because you were able to go back and actually determine more examples of this, where the expenditure was actually just a backfill?
Right, well, we're all focused on making sure that the council has the best numbers possible within the timeline and with the staff shortages that we've incurred as of late. So at the time of the first report, it was the best numbers that we could provide you, but after submitting that report, we then went back and looked at the documentation again. Many neighborhood councils submit documentation that is, some of it is necessary and some of it is not necessary. That combined with the fact that we have to go back into individual records, so the volume of work was very significant. And so we felt that it was, for our final report, necessary to make sure that we went through each transaction, and Tanita Larios from our staff spent many, many hours, and I saw her eyes glazing over at certain many points because of the level of detail that's involved in trying to get you accurate numbers. So that explains the reasons for the minor revisions, is that we needed to shift where, which columns they truly belonged on to, based on the documentation that they had submitted and our own internal records.
And I do need to say that both from the perspective of the department and for the neighborhood councils, this was a, a policy that really required a lot of heavy lifting in a very short amount of time. And I think that both the councils and the department have done a really admirable job of trying to pull this together and, and document it very thoroughly and very well in a very short amount of time. So, so I just want to note that, that-
Thank you.
I think that you and your staff, as well as the neighborhood councils, have done a really terrific job of demonstrating why these funds need to be retained by the neighborhood councils, so thank you for that.
I would also like to thank your leadership and for making sure that neighborhood councils are treated as fairly as possible, given the city's fiscal crisis, and that, you know, there were some allowances in the window of opportunity that you created to make sure that neighborhood councils do have the funds that the city had promised them in the beginning. And while it does not constitute the full amount of their rollover balances from prior years, I think this was a very exemplary effort to make sure that the city is treating neighborhood councils as fairly as possible under the circumstances. And so I think this is, this is a very fair way to make sure that the minimal expenses that neighborhood council, that the city feels the neighborhood council should incur are included in this year's expenses.
Thank you very much. And, you know, again, I've said many times, I think that it certainly makes sense for money that's not otherwise being utilized to be recovered during a budgetary crisis, but on the other hand, neighborhood councils are, should be seen as a bargain by anybody's measure, that these services that are provided by 90 neighborhood councils and the army of volunteers that they provide, that are providing the daily service of, to our constituents, that we, in the city, often, in the city infrastructure, often cannot, especially during difficult budget times, I think is, is a tremendous, tremendously valuable service, given the relatively small amount of money that we're talking about. So I appreciate your efforts in, in making sure that we've been able to preserve as much of that as we can. So thank you for that report, Mr. Kim. If there's nothing else that you have to, to add at this time, I'd like to go to public comment, and then I'm going to come back and talk about what my recommendation is going to be on your report. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, council.
Let's go to the item-specific public comment first, and we have, yeah, we have two cards on item number one so far, Sean Simmons and Noel Weiss. Sean. Oh, yeah, and, you know, why don't we, since we only have two, why don't we go with up to three minutes?
Thank you.
Will be luxurious today.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Sean, is it Simmons or Simons?
It's Simons.
Simons, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Thank you, that's right.
Why don't you go ahead and start?
Um, I, I'm also going to submit this resolution from my council of the Empowerment Congress North Area Neighborhood Development Council of South LA, for the record. And I'd like to read, "In a discussion at the Saturday, April 3rd, 2010, Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition, the link regarding the possible sweep of NC rollover funds due to past policy and freeze of the neighborhood council rollover funds and current accounting and request for funding from the, for the rollover, the link passed the following motion." That link urges the E and N committee to remove all stipulations from, and allow full, that doesn't print up at all, and allow full access for the existing rollover funds. I wanted to mention with this chart that you have, I haven't seen the chart, I don't know if that's the same chart that was sent to us a few days ago via, in eBlast, but for our own council, we did not submit any expenditures that were paid out of the current fiscal year, because that was not what was asked of us, and that was the big sticking point for all neighborhood councils, that a large amount of our funds were paid out of the current year, even though it was in the past year. So I'm uncertain where that accounting is coming from of the noncompliant. With the last chart that I saw, I know that our neighborhood council listed $5,000 under the noncompliant, and I know that we have over $15,000 that was spent from last fiscal year that was spent out of this current year budget. Since each council has not had an opportunity to review the specifics of this, I think it's very important that each council get a chance to look at the specifics of what this chart is before it's taken in as a complete fact. I, as BH mentioned, they have a real, real shortage of, of staff, and I think that being able to have some collaboration in that and being able to watch each other's back would give you guys an actual, full outlook of what those expenditures are. I also wanted to mention, if monies that aren't being used should be recovered in this budget crisis, then I submit that the council's discretionary funds should also be swept into the general fund. Those funds are very much like, like our rollover funds that are kept for emergencies on rainy day, and if that's the, the solution of any unused funds, the council may want to look at that as another way to bring more money into the general fund.
And just for the sake of the record, that's already been done to the tune of over $12 million, so that's already in process. In fact, virtually the entirety of the discretionary funds that are available in my office have already been given up.
Good, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss.
Hi, Councilman. Just, I think for the record, this whole issue of rollover, it kind of amplifies the fact that there's supposed to be a two-year appropriation process under Charter Section 911. That was never really undertaken. Had it been undertaken, I don't think we'd be in this situation, and so this whole, I mean, just for the record, the, I think what the council's done in terms of this sweeping is basically invading that lockbox, that neighborhood council special fund lockbox, which is created under the charter, and I don't think it's lawful. But going forward, it was done under the circumstances, no pun intended. I think there may be some disputes going forward. This idea about borrowing future funds to pay past bills is also, I don't think, you know, very appropriate. And I think there will be disputes possibly, or differences of opinion, and I would encourage consideration for the idea of having some kind of an internal dispute resolution process. In all fairness, the neighborhood councils, a controller can basically hold, you know, small hearings and basically say, what do you say? This is what I say. Controller's determination can be final with maybe, you know, a minor appeal to the council, but I think that would kind of give these neighborhood councils one last shot, which I think, under the circumstances, is only fair, since it was just a screwed-up mess, apparently, from the get-go. I also noted that according to the controller's estimated fiscal receipts, or estimated receipts for the fiscal year 2010, 2011, the total in the lockbox, Neighborhood Empowerment Fund, $7,900,000. The controller did an audit, so-called, I use, put the term in quotes because it wasn't an audit, it was a political document, but in her so-called audit, she never even attempted to try to identify or, basically, if you will, audit or account for where this $7,900,000 went. And I think she needs to be, as part of this rollover, I think, if we're going to go forward on some kind of a clean basis, let's see where we're at right now with regard to the fiscal dollars that she estimated in her, in her report. I'm not sure this was in, you know, this is exhibit H or exhibit two to some document, which I, you know, forget. So those are just, basically, my, my general, you know, comments and feelings on it, and hopefully we can, you know, get by this problem. To the extent that funds are later determined to have been taken unlawfully, once the smoke clears, I think they should at some point go back. But at this point, I understand the practicalities of the situation. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Kim, if I could ask you to come up just for another minute, please. The, Ms. Simons mentioned the availability of, of this chart. Has this, has this just been presented for the first time today publicly?
No, we distributed to the affected neighborhood councils on Friday.
Okay, so this chart that I'm holding in my hand was distributed, and you're free to look at this, Ms. Simons, if you'd like, now, but, but it was distributed to all 90 of the neighborhood councils, or?
No, just to the requesting neighborhood councils.
The ones that are listed in the chart?
And the ones that were rejected.
And the ones that were rejected as well, okay. Now, the point was made that the email blasts that the department sent, the two emails that were sent requesting documentation of the appropriate categories of expenditures, understandably, would not have focused on this issue of the backfill of frozen rollover funds.
Right.
Because it wasn't something that I think had, in its, in its immediate impact, been considered before we began to hear about it. So how, how has the department dealt with the fact, or how could we deal with the fact that some neighborhood councils may not have submitted those sorts of claims, because that wasn't contained within the request within the four corners of what was sent to them?
That's, that's correct. That's why we took the extra step of going back to each individual neighborhood council to look at how many neighborhood councils that we paid for prior year's expenses out of this year's funds. So we took the extra step, and neighborhood councils didn't have to take any action on that, because those are-
You did that internally, within the department.
Correct.
So, okay.
But that's distinguished from neighborhood councils' total rollover funds, which were not paid for. There's a difference between those two numbers.
Okay. Mr. Weiss mentioned the possibility of some sort of a further dispute resolution process, which I think is consistent- sort of a further dispute resolution process, which I think is consistent with one of the, with some of the points that Ms. Simons was making as well. Is there, is there a way that you could envision that that could be structured, consistent with the policy that we're executing now? These appropriations would be made by the council pursuant to your report and the action of this committee. Following that, could you envision some sort of a further resolution process in case neighborhood councils feel that there's discrepancies in the actual numbers or there's things that we hadn't considered?
I think, given the extremely limited staff resources that are available to us, it would be hard to open up that window to allow neighborhood councils to dispute our findings. If you're interested in providing neighborhood councils with some greater transparency as to the kind of accounting work that we did, what we could offer is to give neighborhood councils a more detailed breakdown of their requests that they made, showing which ones that we felt complied with council and department instructions, and which are the numbers that constitute the second column in terms of the funds that we felt we took out of this year's funds for prior year's expenses. And we can show them that to make sure that, you know, from our perspective, that the numbers are substantiated. But to open up a kind of dispute resolution process would be very timely. And with the limited staff that we have, we have to prepare for next year's fiscal period. And so we have to request budgets, and then we have to do the reconciliation of these funds, because now, these are the, these constitute the rollover funds that neighborhood councils will have for the next year. So we have to do a lot of accounting work.
Yeah. I think it would be appropriate to provide that kind of transparency that you've offered. I think it would be helpful to the neighborhood councils. And if they're, if particular neighborhood councils do feel that there is a significant discrepancy, then certainly the actions we would take today and that the council would take and that we're doing through this sweep process wouldn't preclude some future policy decision that would be made by the council or recommended by this committee for dealing with disputes in the future. I mean, those options wouldn't be foreclosed, even after the action that we're taking today. So, I hold that out there as a prospect as well. After this is done, if there are, and after the neighborhood councils are provided with the kind of information that you've described, if there are additional issues that they collectively or individually feel need to be dealt with, we can certainly deal with them separately from this policy. So, okay. With that, I thank you very much. My... Oh, okay. All right. I'd like to ask the CAO representative to come up, because I understand there's some need for clarification on part of the technical, one of the technical terms in the, in the report itself before I move it. So.
Terry Sauer, CAO staff. Mr. Chairman, there's an additional recommendation that needs to be added to Dunn's report. As you know, the money from the 1.6 was, was taken out of, transferred out of the trust fund to the, and transferred to the unappropriated balance. We've provided the clerk with language that would allow to the controller to transfer that money back to Fund 44B. Right now, the department's report has the neighborhood, the general manager transferring money, but there's no money to transfer because it's in the other pot of money. So this is just the technical language that you need. What it basically says for the record is authorizing the controller to take, transfer the money, whether, if it's the million, the $741,000 or the $1 million, from the unappropriated balance to the reserve fund and appropriating it there from, back to Fund 44B. And you need to have this language in there to order to sort of complete the entire process.
To ensure that the amount included in the report is able to be transferred from the UB
Back.
To the department funds in order to be made available for distribution to the neighborhood councils.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Although it's unusual and not consistent with the usual process for this committee, I've been asked by Ms. Simons for another chance to comment on this matter. And without any great objection from any of the public, I'll be happy to grant that. So if you could just, just keep it very brief, if you can, Ms. Simons, come on up.
Super brief. I actually, I did see that chart on Friday. And that chart has us down for $500 of non-compliant, which you're now saying is not really non-compliant. I suggest that Dunn ask the neighborhood councils to submit from that chart of what is considered non-compliant. I was told that, you know, they went through what we submitted. But again, what we submitted was what they requested, which was money that had not yet been paid. Neighborhood councils should have an opportunity to submit monies that have been paid out of that fiscal year, because I think you have a whole nother group to look at. I want to just throw something out there as well, that if you're looking at the $740,000 and then the $300 of something non-compliant, which is almost $1 million, the amount of rollover funds is about 1.6. There's going to be further disputes of the additional monies of the $600,000 from neighborhood councils that feel that this hasn't been accurately accounted for. It's really, we're talking about such a small amount of money for something that has clearly now been seen to be such a mess in the way it unfolded. I'm asking that you might consider that this whole thing go away and that the entire rollover funds be returned, that it just was not set out in a, in a proper manner. There's not that much money left that we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. It's going to be the recommendation of the chair that we approve the department's report with the following amendments. One, that we make the technical clarification described by the CAO to ensure that the transfer is appropriately made. And two, that the total amount to be included in that transfer include the $312,554.00 that were in the category of, for back, lack of a better term, the backfill amounts paid out of the current fiscal year for prior commitments. So, it will be my recommendation to include the full amount that's described in the report as both compliant and non-compliant, although I would, again, ask that the terminology be changed, because I don't think that that's in fact non-compliant. I think we can find a better term than that. So that will be the recommendation of the chair. And if there's nothing further on that item, thank you very much, Mr. Kim. We will now proceed to general comment. And right now, the only comment card that I have for general comment is Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Simons is a busy guy. Yeah, we don't have to go over this in council again.
But just for the sake of the record, there is another committee going on right now.
Yeah, exactly.
The Public Safety Committee.
Right, right. My general comment are, just in general, one, I think, again, want to push for Sean's proposal as a substitute. And we're going to continue to work that. And hopefully, at some point, we can have a, you know, a good hearing before the committee with regard to that, as it's further refined, particularly with regard to some of the issues that I guess we still need city attorney input on, which has yet to be forthcoming. Secondly, I think this, I think it was 5.2 million or 5.6 million that Ms. Grue identified in her report. We need to have, I believe the public needs to have that agendized. And Ms. Grue will come in here and say, what's going on with that 5.6 million? Again, because her audit, Councilman, doesn't identify where that money went. And I've heard various comments about what she's saying to neighborhood councils about where it went. But I believe it got basically taken away from the lockbox. And I think if that's the case, it really should be put back. And that was last fiscal year. Three, proper budgeting going forward. I would ask that you give consideration to making sure that this year going forward, we do it right. And that we really do appropriate, as per Section 911 of the Charter, two years' worth of appropriations for the neighborhood councils. That way, they can plan. We won't have this problem going forward that you're trying to resolve now. And I think it's appropriate to immunize the neighborhood councils from the politics. And they can basically make the commitments and know that they can basically fulfill them. Fourth, again, I want to just encourage the use of, the new use of, that's never been made, of 908 of the Charter on various issues. It could be with regard to the budget, it could be with regard to the ratepayer advocate, it could be with regard to neighborhood council issues. Holding citywide hearings, you guys are very busy. It's not, I think it's there to facilitate the governance protocol. And I think it's consistent with Sean's proposal of drawing in, the neighborhood councils now can step up. There's a lot of intellectual capabilities that are leaving the city, that can now go to the neighborhood councils. They could possibly retain them as consultants. There's no reason to kind of let that float away. And just starting with something under 908, I think would be a great positive precedent going forward. And again, lastly, I just want to encourage the city attorney to step up as well. We don't have anything in writing. We're talking policy issues here. I believe, again, city attorney is the attorney for the people. This is, when we're talking policy, we need, and you need, that guidance so that we can have a good cogent discussion. And you guys can do the best job you possibly can with kind of knowledge of forethought. And as we all know, there's none, oftentimes not necessarily one right answer. But I think in the dialogue and the discussion of ideas going forward, I think there's a lot that can be done to make the system work better for the people. So those are my general comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. I, I'm going to hold the meeting open for a few more minutes without adjourning, in the hopes that Mr. Simons will be able to join us. But that does conclude our business. If you have, would you like to provide some general comment, Ms. Simons?
I do.
Well, come right on up then.
I just want to read what I just found in my iPhone. And I don't have my glasses, so. This is sent from our treasurer on March 8. Dear Jaclyn, I have attached an Excel spreadsheet of the NC account payable from our rollover funds. These are projects that Nandec has outstanding. So it's not something that has been paid yet. As I'm sure you can imagine, this has come upon us quick and we still do not have every piece of information for each of these projects. Please let us know what information may be missing and we can help get it for you. I know, for example, we do not have the final piece of funding for the Pep Park project, but will by the April 20 deadline. This was sent in March. It is unfortunate that we were not made aware of these many rules earlier, as we have already spent over $15,000 on projects committed in the prior fiscal year during this fiscal year. And we were not expecting that this come out of this year's funding. Please let me know if you have any questions. Jill Remeski, Treasurer. This is just the proof and the example that what we submitted, what most councils, I assume, then submitted, was what was requested of us, which is money that was still to be paid out, that could be paid out, that now could be paid out from the frozen rollover funds. We were not asked to submit documentation of things that have already been paid in our current fiscal year, because we were not able to access those rollover funds. That's why this chart does not fulfill the need of full access to the rollover funds due to the freeze. So I will forward that on to your people.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, as I said, we're just going to hold the meeting open for another few minutes in the hopes of Mr. Simons being able to arrive. But if he's not able to do that within the next three minutes or so, we will be adjourned. All right. I've just been informed, it looks like we're not going to be able to have Mr. Simons here. He's tied up with the other committee. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for being here.